All board members are in attendance tonight, which includes Alicia Hayes, Gordon Laper, Judy Newman, Kirti Asijah Kaufman, Laurel O'Rourke, Michelle Shu, and myself, Maya Ravassa. Please join Superintendent Dai as he leads us in the flag salute.
Hi, the flag of the United States of America. The United Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now I will read the land acknowledgement. The Eugene School Board would like to acknowledge that our institution sits on the homelands of the Kalapuriya people. In the Treaties of 1851 and 1854 to 1855, and the subsequent forced removals of many Indian people from western Oregon, some of the Kalapuriya were moved to the Grand Ron Reservation and some were moved to the Syllets Reservation. It is important to note that all of Lane County was and continues to be an important trading and gathering area for cannabis and other resources. During the Restoration Era from 1977 to 1989, Lane County was designated as the service area for the Confederate tribes of Coos, Tularan, Nkwa, and Sayusla Indians, the Confederate tribes of Grand Ron Indians, the Confederate tribes of Syllets Indians, the Coquill Indian tribe, and the Kauparik Band of Nkwa Indians. Eugene School District 4J acknowledges that the descendants of original and service area inhabitants of this land are still here today. They are thriving members of our schools and our communities. Countless members of other tribes now also call our community and schools their home. We wish to thank those original stewards of this land. We as fellow stewards of this land wish to remember that we need to take good care of this land and take good care of all the members of our school district community. We move into an agenda review. Are there any questions, changes, or corrections to the agenda anyone would like to request? Gordon?
I'd like to move that we move the... The first item that we have under items for action or future meeting, integrative guidance proposed activities, which is hearing from the three employee groups, NAPSO, EEA, about their thoughts on how we could most smartly spend the integrated guidance money to move that up to just after the consent groups. These are employees who are here non-paid time.
Are there any objections to moving the first item for future action? Sorry, I'll do that again with my mic on. Are there any objections to moving the first item for future action up in the agenda to take place directly after the consent agenda? Please speak up if you have an objection. Laurel, is your hand raised without this or are you in line for agenda review? Agenda review? In that case, without objection, we will move up the first item for future action to occur right after our consent agenda. Laurel?
I have a few things, things to add to the agenda item. How, discussion on how the board sets the goals, policies, and objectives to policies. The goals to policies. I wrote that backwards. The goals and policy, goals and objectives to policies. Sorry, I speak German also and we write backwards in German. So...
Can you say it one more time just so we can all be on the same page?
Discussion of how the board sets the goals and objectives in policies. Basically, the metrics for policies.
Are there any objections to adding as an... I'm looking at you Laurel, an item for information?
Yeah.
The, a discussion around how the board sets object, sorry, goals and objectives in policy in the metrics around those actions?
Yes.
Is there an objection, if you object, if you could speak up, that would be helpful? Okay, without objection, we will add as an item for information, a discussion around the setting of goals, objectives, and policy in the metrics that lead to those actions. You said there was more than one more?
Yes, I would like to add to, this is an item for action to, for support I was getting for, that I asked for and got from the district, which they have permission to do, but I apparently board members have opposed that support that I was getting from the district. And now, I would like to bring it to the board for permission to continue it.
So, I want to make sure I'm saying that correctly. You would like an item for action to continue support that you were receiving from the district and to get permission from the board to receive that support?
Correct, even though it's not necessary, but apparently that is what we're doing now.
Is there any objection to adding as an item for action the request to approve continued support that Laurel has been receiving? Gordon?
I have no objection, I'm just wondering. Laurel, I'd be happy to do this, however you think makes sense. Because we're talking, I think...
You can't hear.
You can't hear?
I wasn't hearing.
Can you hear now?
Yeah.
My question, I have no objection, my question is... I believe that under, we have under items for action or future meeting, board meeting security measures, that would be a discussion about the kind of broader context of this. And I don't know if you thought, while keeping this as an item for action, not certainly going to enter a future meeting, I would be helpful first and then this, or I'm just trying to figure out if there's some logical weird things that has to connect those.
I do not believe they're connected.
Okay, then I have no objection.
If there's any objection, please speak up. Okay, without objection, add as an item for action, board approval for continued support for Laurel?
I also had a, one more, if you want me to go on or if somebody else would like to go before I continue.
Go ahead, Alicia.
Okay, I've come to my attention that there are board members attending district meetings that are not on our board calendar. I would like to, I would like to ask for a schedule of these meetings and for all the board to be aware of any meetings that are happening that the, that the board is not aware of. And so, that would have to be a discussion or, and I guess, an item for action to decide if we're going to make that decision, if we're going to ask for the schedule or not.
Are there any objections to adding as an item for action, the approval of creating a accessible schedule? Is that okay to work that way Laurel?
A schedule of, as far as I know and from board policy, that all board members should know what board member, what meetings board members are attending. I've been informed there are meetings happening with board members and district staff and other people that we are not aware of. And so, that means that we should have a discussion about that happening and also if we want it to continue happening, to have a schedule for that so the whole board is aware.
Gordon?
I'm, it's not, I'm not clear exactly what the, what the scope of this would be. So, I would, to me, I would rather have it as either item for information or item for future action, so we could hear with issues and discuss it. I mean, if it's totally clear and we want to make a decision tonight, that's fine with me. But this is the first I'm hearing about it and I don't understand exactly what it is. So, I feel like I'd rather have it as item for discussion tonight or future action and then hold off till another...
That's fine with me because we could always, somebody could always pass a motion if they want and then the board can vote on that, so that's fine.
Michelle?
I'm very unclear on what you're, what you're saying, that there are scheduled meetings that board members are attending with staff and aren't there, aren't all of our meetings noticed?
They're not public meetings. I wasn't aware of them, I just found out. So, if there are meetings happening with district staff and other people and the board isn't informed of it, then that is against our policy. So, we either need to change our policy or find out what's happening. But we're a board of seven equal people, so we should all know what is happening.
I don't believe that that's...
Did you understand that?
I don't believe that that's...
Well, this, this isn't the discussion right now.
So, Michelle, do you, do you object to adding this to the agenda? And then we can bring it up as a motion and decide whether we add it to the agenda?
I object to bringing it up in this agenda.
Okay Laurel, then, do you want to make a motion to add this and we can bring it to a vote?
Yes, I make a motion that we... I forget which one, for a meeting for information, I guess, is the one that Gordon suggested.
Jimmy, you said you're crazy.
What? Is somebody talking?
I think somebody inadvertently un给自己 themselves.
Okay, well, thank you for telling me I'm crazy. So, anyway, the, that we have board members attending district meetings that are not on the board calendar. So, I would like to have either it added to policy or that we, we make a decision as a board if that is something that is going to happen. Because overstepping into the superintendent's role is an important thing to discuss as board and make sure that we understand what's going on. If that's what this board wants to do, then we can do it. If not, then we should know what the schedule is, either way.
So, the motion is to add an item for information to discuss the attendance of board members in meetings with district staff?
That are not on any schedule.
That are not on any schedule. Is there a second? You can ask the question if you can second. Is there a second? Alicia seconds it. Is there any discussion? Gordon?
Laurel, do you, can you let us know what the policy is that you're referring to? Because I'm unclear about that.
There's board policy that says that, that board members, this is the one that I asked to be added to agenda a while ago about how often we're meeting with district staff and it was blocked and it was never brought back to agenda. How often and, and how should we be part of discussions and with the district staff? It's not our role, it's overstepping. There's lots of different places in board policy where it says it is the superintendent's job to lead the district and the district's job to, the, the board's job to make policy.
Thanks.
Gordon, I think that it might be policy BG, GBD that Laurel is referring to. Under that, that is the policy that outlines board staff communication.
And I also think there's a policy having to do with understanding that, what meetings that board members are having.
Judy?
I think, and I think this is probably worth the conversation because, you know, so, I think, you know, we know if there's a quorum in the board, we have to notice it. But also when there's a subcommittee or, or, like, for example, we notice our legislative committee even though there's just two of us because we're doing some work. So, clarifying how far that reaches, maybe, where, is it any meeting? And when, when do we let people know? Because sometimes board members could be representing the board and maybe those need to be noticed or something. So, I just think we probably need to have a common understanding.
Yes, yes, that all board members are a part of that discussion. Otherwise, right now, we're not part of the discussion. I didn't even know it was happening.
Are there any other points of discussion or questions or clarifications? Kirti?
I'm just, I'm also fine with the item for information on those. I am, I guess, we would decide at the, at that conversation if we're just looking for like a collective calendar or whatever that end result would look like.
We would have to have a motion.
Okay. Sorry, just a quick question.
Sorry, I was just taking notes. So, is there any other discussion or questions? In that case, all those in favor of adding an item for information to discuss when and under what circumstances meetings with staff members would be added to a collective calendar? Raise your hand and say aye. Aye. All those opposed, raise your hand and say nay.
Nay.
Okay, the motion passes six to one with ayes from Maya Ravassa, Gordon Laper, Kirti Asijah Kaufman, Laurel O'Rourke, Alicia Hayes, Judy Newman, and a nay from Michelle Shu. The item will be added as an item for information. Are there any other changes or additions to the, sorry, agenda? Alicia?
Yes, and I want to apologize. I have technical difficulties, so I'm not on the screen. So, I just didn't disinform you of this. So, we'll work on that. So, I would like to add to the agenda this evening a discussion about the use of the Signal app.
As an item for information?
Yes.
Are there any objections to adding to the agenda a discussion around the use of the Signal app? Please speak up if you have an objection.
Gordon? So, I'll make a motion then, since Gordon has an objection? Okay?
Okay, I was just going to explain something, but it might be...
It's probably better if I make the motion and then I can speak to it as one maker of the motion. Because I don't give a second, it's done anyway. So, let's do it this way, if that's okay with you.
That's no problem.
Go ahead, Alicia.
So, I'd like to move that we add to the agenda this evening the discussion about the use of the Signal app.
Alicia has moved to...
Just information.
Alicia has moved to add as an item for information, the use of the Signal app. Is there a second? Judy Newman seconds the motion, is there discussion?
Yes, and I'll go ahead and speak to the motion as a motion, personally make the motion. During our February 1st meeting, I requested that communication and the use of the Signal app be put on our upcoming agenda. At this time, at that time, it was requested that we have an attorney give us input regarding the use of the app and its legality regarding public records and open meeting laws. I have looked at the minutes from the last two leadership meetings and have found no indication that the topic was, has been scheduled, although it was referred to leadership. The use of the Signal app has been reported in the news and I've personally been asked by parents and community members about the use of the app by our school board and some of our school board members. It appears that we have a number of board members who are currently or have recently used this app. My understanding is this app is, the app is that you text, your text messages will automatically be erased and are not retrievable. So, tonight, I'm not asking that we get a legal opinion. Instead, I'm asking that as a board, we discuss why we as a board would use Signal and if those members who have used it to text other board members are continuing to use it or have terminated the use of it. I'm hoping that tonight we can get answers to these questions that have been raised by our community members and gain a better understanding of why board members would be using this app. These questions do not require an attorney. Let's deal with this now and get back to the important work of providing the best education to all of our 4J students.
Gordon, you had your hand raised.
I did. I just wanted to let you, let everybody know that this was talk within leadership and that Chief of Staff Rob Hess and I had a conversation, reached out to Eric DeFreeze to ask him to prepare a briefing for the board in a work session that will include legal guidance on a number of things, but also specifically including use of Signal, Snapchat, or other digital platforms that don't retain records. And that is, and he agreed and is working on that and we're expecting that to happen within a month.
Laurel?
I thought Kirti was next.
Sorry, someone's taking her hand down.
No, we're good. Gordon just said I was on that leadership call too. So, Gordon just said what I was going to in any case, so.
Kirti, Laurel?
So, what I would like to say, as being somebody who's worked for the government before and as part of a board, a board makes policy. Lawyers look to see if it's legal. Lawyers do not make policy. If you are following a lawyer before, instead of making the policy, we were elected to make policy, we can make the policy, we can have the discussion, we can do everything that needs to be done to talk about this. And then it should go to a lawyer, absolutely. But lawyers, and this district has had a problem with this, do not make policy. They check policy to make sure it's legal and it falls within the proper guidelines. I also would like to say Eric DeFreeze has been biased in executive sessions against me and I do not think he is appropriate to be doing this work. And that we, I have asked for us not to continue to use them and I think it's purposeful that we are continuing to use a lawyer who has been racially biased in executive session meetings. And we have a lot of different choices to use, but we continue to use the same ones because I think it suits an agenda that's happening, anyway.
It's against Robert's rules for us to attach motive to individuals' actions. We can speak to the motion at hand.
I added, it's against Robert's rules for you to correct a board member.
Actually, that's not accurate.
No, you, it's not your job to correct me.
It is my job to call people when they're out of order and attaching motives to individuals against the rules. Judy, you have your hands raised, panelists?
I just want to say that I appreciate that leadership did reach out because that was part of the conversation. But I also agree there's a board conversation about, you know, whether or not it's legal and I'm not really sure. I think the conversation is why do we need to use it? How are we going to communicate with each other? I think that is very much our conversation and I believe that's germane to us being able to work together. So, I'm glad we're going to do that, but to me, that will settle the issue. And so, I'd like to have an opportunity to talk together as a board about this.
Are there any other discussion points, Gordon?
Yeah, I guess I just wanted to, to explain when this came up last time, it came up in the context of concern about records that need to be kept not being kept. And the people said we have different understandings of what the record retention requirement is and that's why we've got, that's why we have to get a legal briefing. So, I'm not interested in having that conversation before we have the legal briefing. Obviously, we make, we're not asking a lawyer to make policy, we're asking a lawyer to say what the current requirements are around record retention. We can always make policy, I mean, anybody can propose a policy anytime. I agree, that's for the board to do. I also think this is part of a broader discussion about this, about that, about the status of voicemail, about responding to broad information requests, about replying all on emails or sending emails that go to all members, that these are all questions about public records, the meeting that came up, and they're all part of what we're going to be briefed on. So, I don't, so to me, it makes sense to have, to separate out the things, to get the legal guidance on records retention. And either then or before, if somebody wants to make a policy proposal, that's fine. But I think I would discuss it in the context of everything else and about what the legal briefing is. Thanks.
I'd like to put myself into the queue, but I'll let you go first, Laurel?
Go ahead.
Alicia, I'm wondering if we can make a friendly amendment to your motion to go beyond Signal specifically to include what Gordon just outlined and to cover all types of digital communication as well as how we use our emails? I guess that's digital communications. You can do whatever you want.
It sounds like what Gordon was saying is he would like to do that in a month when we have the attorney, so that's not...
I'm, I'm, I'm saying to the...
Just for tonight?
Topics that Gordon brought up, not his, his schedule. I'm just asking if you would be willing to amend your motion to include the conversation around emails and all different types of electronic communication platforms?
For the discussion this eve...
For the discussion this evening and, I mean, not to add to your motion, but with the assumption that we would obviously need to have this with an attorney as well.
That's confusing to me.
I would just like the friendly amendment to include all digital platforms of choice, including the use of email.
But we won't have an attorney present time because...
No, because we don't have one scheduled.
And because the discussion I was hoping to have wasn't really about the legality of it. It's about how we work as a board. I don't know if I should be going into that now. Could you just ask me about the...
I'm just asking if we can add multiple platforms and include a female.
I think I'm going to stick with Signal because it, I think that's really the focus and the sticking point. So, I appreciate that and I'm, I'm going to say no, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, it remains as strictly limited to the Signal application? Are there any, any other, anybody who hasn't spoken yet? Want to say anything? Laurel?
Yes, so... It is very important that we follow public meetings law and I think it's interesting and worrisome that we have pushback against having this discussion on this board. Public meetings law is there for a reason and so the public can know what their elected officials are doing. So, it, it happened and it was created because things have happened that were not above board. So, if people are having Signal conversations and they are disappearing, that is against public meetings law. So, while we can have a discussion about it, really, it is... really it has been proven in other jurisdictions that is seen as an inappropriate tool to use. I think it's very important that we show as a board that we want to have this discussion and that we do not want to continue using systems that can be seen as unethical. I think it's very important that we show that to the public. It's not just about us. We are representatives of our public and we are, we set an example for our students in what is ethical and right. And, or we can set the example of what can we get away with. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other? Yeah, I don't, Michelle wants to speak up. She has a chance to speak here.
I think limiting this discussion to only Signal is questionable. There are many other ways of communicating. There are many other policies that um, that are, that relate to communication. Specifically, talking only about one app feels disingenuous to me. And that is, and I, I feel like Gordon, what Gordon brought up before about looking at all forms of digital communication is what the conversation should really be about when we're talking about ethics and following laws. So, um, I, I don't agree that we should only be talking about one specific app. It's a much greater discussion than that.
Alicia, you go first and then I would like to also add myself into the queue.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sure. I was just gonna say that if this is a discussion that is rooted in transparency and ethics and being open with the community, I have to fully agree with Michelle that limiting, limiting it to one application and one platform feels problematic. Alicia?
Yeah, thanks for that, Maya. It's, it's interesting because when I wrote this and brought it forward, it's because the Signal app has been what people are saying that we have four board members using. I don't know if that's true or not. But in an attempt to be better and communicate more, it feels very hard for me to think that that's happening. I just really wanted an opportunity kind of to clear the air on Signal. And so if it's not happening, I wanted to get people to say, a chance to say, I've never used it. I don't know what you're talking about because Signal is what's swirling. And I agree, absolutely. We need to talk about email being public record. We need to talk about your texts being public record. We need to do all of that. And I see that happening in a month, but right now I don't want to wait a month to clear the air on Signal. Because where I sit, not being one of the people that has it, I have a lot of concerns and questions and they may not be valid concerns and questions. But I don't know that because I'm not meeting with you all and asking you. So in an attempt to be transparent, to bring these things to the surface, that's why I wanted to talk about it tonight. Looks like I'm going to go down, down on this one. We don't know, but you know, I just was fed in person. So let's see. If that's the case, then that would be the chance for those of you particularly who have been kind of suggested that you're using Signal to, to talk about that. And that was my intent. That's why I didn't want to bring all the other things into it. But we will also in a month get a chance to go deeper with all of those. It's just a month again of not knowing what we waited and we'll be hearing things. It's my thought. I'm good.
Thanks, Alicia. Kersey?
Yeah, so I just wanted to say, cause like a lot of this is like they're communication apps. And if you guys want transparency, yes, I've been using Signal. I work in a secure job that requires me to transfer data and leave it because I travel internationally. So if that seems accusatory or nefarious in one way, I'm happy to bring that up with the board. But I just want to say your concern with the app, Alicia, is that it deletes messages. It's like that, that's not the only one that does so. So if we're having a conversation where that is the concern, then it should be a broad-based conversation. We can even have messages set to delete on a WhatsApp. I don't know if people know that, like we have a very high-tech communications apparatuses that do these things. So if the concern is about a specific thing, doing a specific thing, it is not the only app that does that. So if there's policies around that, I think those are larger policies that are attached to communication in general and what is ethical. So in the interest of transparency, if this is where we're going, then I would say we have a communications plan and a transparent conversation on that that does address the method, not a specific thing, because that to me seems disingenuous. So I am going to just say that, that I am in full support of having a conversation on communication policy. And if it's by methods of like, we don't want things to disappear, or we don't want these things to disappear, whatever those are. All of those are valid questions and those are all valid concerns in terms of ethics and transparency. Happy to have that conversation. I just think it's nuts to talk about one thing that does one thing when there's like 15 other things that also do the same things that are on regular messaging, things that we all use as communication tools. So this is where I'm going with that question. So yeah, I know, I would like to not have it limited. I would like the conversation, but not necessarily keep it limited to that.
I'm gonna just jump in and, and ask all of my board members to refrain from assigning attention to people's requests, et cetera, comments, actions. And if anybody is starting to read it, you can find it in Robert's Rules between pages 391 to 394. It is not aligned with Robert's Rules of Decorum. And I'm asking that we all refrain from doing so. It doesn't, it doesn't help us take care of this mess.
Maya, I'll apologize for my comments on that.
It's, I, I appreciate that. Thank you, Kersey. Are there any other points of discussion, questions? In that case, I bring to the vote, all those in favor of adding as an item for information, a discussion of the use of the Signal app, raise your hand and say aye.
Can't see you, but.
Okay, I can see you. All right, we have three hands raised. All those opposed, raise your hand and say nay. We have four hands raised. The motion does not pass with ayes from Laurel Lurworth, Alicia Hayes, and Judy Newman, and nays from Airebassa, Michelle Shu, Gordon Leifer, and Kersey Hasidra Kaufman. Are there any other questions, changes, or corrections to the agenda that anyone would like to request?
Any questions you can add to it, Lauren.
Can I second that? All right. Okay. Well, then, shall we begin? Introduction of guests and superintendent's report.
I couldn't hear what was just said on the sidebar there.
Alicia requested that we get out of here at 9:00 PM. And I seconded it and it was, um,
Sorry.
It was, it was, it was a joke.
Sorry.
I tried not to do that.
Superintendent Dyne, you have the floor.
Good evening, members of the board, listening audience, and those in our audience present. Thanks for coming, thanks for listening. Excuse me. March is living up to its folklore of "in like a lion" as wintry weather continues to be a consideration each morning. Hopefully, the latter part of that proverb will remain true as it, at the end of the month, leaves like a lamb with a little bit more sun and predictable weather. I highlighted the work of our implement weather team last meeting and they've continued to keep their eye on the temperatures and precipitation. Thankfully, we've not yet had another schedule change, but we'll continue to monitor as needed. This evening, it's my pleasure to bring celebration to the forefront of my conversation. First of all, the window to nominate our staff in the annual A Champion in Education Award Ceremony is officially open. We encourage everyone to pause and think about individuals across our system who routinely demonstrate a deep commitment to our students and our district by recognizing them through a nomination for an ACE award. I'm pleased to share that our ceremony will return to an in-person celebration this year at the South Eugene High School Octoium on May 4th. Nomination forms are available online on the district website and are accepted until March 31st. Additionally, I'd like to share with you some important statistics that highlight a critical set of teammates that make the daily operations in our district possible, our classified staff. Annually, our technology services team processes more than 3,000 device repair requests, nearly 30,000 help desk support requests, and more than 100,000 Zoom sessions across our system. Our facilities team tends and maintains approximately 600 acres of school and district-owned property. To put that into perspective, that's nearly the size of the city of Coburg. On average, each of our dedicated custodians cleans the equivalent of 18, 2,000 square foot homes every day, refinishing 1,750,000 square feet of tile floors and steam cleaning 550,000 square feet of carpet each summer. One in three 4J students is safely transported to and from school each day by our dedicated bus drivers. These critical teammates perform more than 230 safety checks before getting the 127 school buses on the road to service nearly 2,000 bus stops, which are safely made possible by the district mechanics who keep our buses humming and complete more than 300 oil changes a year. Once at school, our students and staff are served by the nerve center of our front office teams who ensure that all who enter are welcomed and cared for and the needs of the building are met. Hundreds of dedicated and caring educational assistants provide critical supports for learning, one-on-one resources, safety and supervision, and after-school programming to meet our students' needs. To keep our students healthy and in school, our health services assistants compile and manage literally thousands of 4J student health records annually. Here at the district office, staff organize Learn to Ride classes, safety courses, translate thousands of documents to ensure all families have access to important school information and review and manage more than 3,000 transfer requests for students in and out of our district. This snapshot doesn't even begin to capture the countless seen and unseen activities our classified teammates perform day in and day out, year-round, without whom teaching and learning and overall district operations simply would not be possible. To accurately share the magnitude of their impact will keep us here all evening as their support is immeasurable. To that end, it is my pleasure to share the following proclamation officially setting aside next week as a dedicated time to acknowledge and appreciate the work of our classified team. Whereas the education of youth is essential to the future of our community, state, country, and world, and whereas classified employees are the backbone of our public education system, and whereas classified employees work directly with students, educators, families, volunteers, business partners, and community members, and whereas classified employees support the smooth operation of offices, the safety and maintenance of buildings and property, and the safe transportation, healthy nutrition, and direct instruction of students, and whereas our community depends upon and trusts classified employees to serve students, and whereas classified employees with their diverse talents and true dedication nurture students throughout their school years. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the Eugene School District 4J proclaims March 6th through March 10th, 2023, to be Classified Employee Appreciation Week, and be it further resolved that the Eugene School District 4J strongly encourages all members of our community to join in this observance, recognizing the dedication and hard work of these individuals. They did this first day of March 2023. Thank you very much for all that you do. Thank you very much for giving me the time to speak, and please applause. Thank you, I appreciate that, Alicia.
Thank you, Dr. Dyne. Next up on the agenda is receiving reports from high school student representatives. Is there anyone who would like to volunteer to go first?
I think first. Um, at Churchill this, last Friday, we had our Black Excellence Speak and the people really enjoyed it. We had our choir sing and then we had some people come from the gasp, gasp here, I think that's how you say it. Um, choir from the U of L and people, like they got people motivated. It was really great. I enjoyed it. Um, and then, um, everyone from our school feels like the new schedule change is going to be a little different and they're kind of worried about it, how long classes are. They can't, they feel like right now the classes are already long and adding more hours or I guess minutes to it will, make it hard for them to stay focused on their work and.
Thank you, Eddy. Who would like to go next?
Oh, I do.
Rory?
Hi, hi, my name is Rory Young. I am there at North Eugene High School. Last week on Friday, February 24th, June had a final heart carnival. It was free and due for everyone. It was an opportunity to show people the wonderful clubs that schools offer. A lot of them came and enjoyed the fun. Moving on to our main topic, I'd like to discuss something that I believe is also very relevant at other schools in the district. As we head to the end of the winter season, as always, there's a cold and illness is what's going around the school. This always happens half the year. It's a very current issue, not just because of the sickness itself, but because students feel unable to stay home from school. It's because missing a full day of classes, no matter your schedule, can leave students feeling very overwhelmed and rightfully so. Because while teachers do put on assignments on Canvas, several do not put online forms of paper copies on Canvas. And Canvas modules also lack the instruction and the guidance that you need for class. This leads to students dealing with being ill as well as trying to stay up at work without all the necessary tools. Students tend to just be asking their friends to send pictures of paperwork sheets or whiteboard or notes that are necessary to complete the next due assignments. The idea of this thing with ours is headw� they wake up planning the weather. They give people a sense of guilt on whether they are sick enough to stay home and whether it is really worth the ticket to take a rest. Many people, especially students who choose their school not based on their symptoms, instead on their classroom work in mind, especially those with AP or IB classes. It leads to a dangerous cycle. Students don't work themselves and therefore get worse as well as students exposing others around them, creating a dangerous cycle of illness because they can't stay home. Personally, I am guilty of this. I know in the past month I have been feeling sick and I'm almost always about a half day of school and exactly that I could not miss or that I could not be able to catch up if I didn't. The solution to this problem cannot be to end illness because if that was the case, we would have done already. But there is a way to significantly lessen the anxiety and the guilt that students feel when they are sick. If teachers taped their classes with cameras simply on the angle that would show the teacher or the white note notes or whatever is most important of the day. It's a very simple way with a huge positive impact. The teacher would not have to do any additional work. There would be, no need to be any editing. They would just need to start a video and end a new period, then tap it to Canvas module. This would let the student have the instruction that is needed and lower the anxiety and bring down the number of kids in school due to sickness and it would make them not have to choose from getting dressed and getting the education they deserve. Thank you.
Thanks, Rory. Parker?
Hi, I'm Parker Anderson. I'm the representative for North Eugene High School. Start our prom theme was decided for this year and it'll be a night under the stars. I'm very excited for that. As well as the North Eugene Theater, there's an Oregon fifth through eighth graders to put on a performance of Mary Poppins that opens tomorrow night. As well as the baseball theater class to put on their performance of The Legend of Sleepy Hollow next week. To move on to the Miami topic. I know there's at least one student speaker, potentially more here to talk on that, on more specifics issue or there will be in the future. I want to touch on at least slightly that there's been a lot of anxiety and frustration and fear among the students recently. And looking back, as we've seen what feels like more and more disregard of student issues by admin. And that looking back, and right now it feels like there have been a lot of issues of racism, bullying, and general inappropriate curricular actions and words from students that have been reported to teachers and admin, but it feels like nothing being done. It's to hope for students to feel safe in the school where it doesn't feel like those students- It's to hope for students to feel safe in the school where it doesn't feel like those students can rely on many adults in the building create a safe space for misconduct and hate from other students.
Thank you, Parker. Grant or Ren? Grant? Okay, Grant, and then Ren, you can go next.
Hi, I'm Grant Gumbel. I'm the student representative for Shelton. And the report for the past two weeks, to start off, our GSA club hosted guest speakers from Transponder, which is the local organization designed to provide resources to transgender individuals throughout Eugene. And this was our really positive thing for the school and faculty. It was a success. Next Wednesday, our Black Student Union is hosting a celebration for Black History Month during lunch. And choir students competed at districts this past weekend with seven first-place winners. And last week, Shelton invited over 100 students from both Monroe and Calum to play their girls' basketball senior night. And this was a really big success for the middle schoolers and high schoolers. The Shelton colleagues got first place at Nationals in Florida this past weekend, and two relay teams from Swinburne to State. Sort, and then ending sports, sources of strength, but it's spring decorations are at the school with a theme of stress management, and this helped a lot of students know that they're not alone with academics in like stress with that, since it's finals week, coming up to finals week. Next week's Classified Staff Appreciation Week, and we have events planned daily for those staff. And then to address student concerns, which is my main topic, that these students have felt really unclear and concerned with what next year's schedule will look like, and there hasn't even been any official announcements on it. And I think students would appreciate it if the district and teachers were more transparent about what's happening, because a lot of students don't really know anything about what next year's going to look like, and it's kind of stressful since we're choosing classes next week also. So just no one really knows, like, how long classes are, how many classes we'll have, and just kind of everything related to school, and that's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Grant. Ren?
Hi, I'm Ren Washington. I'm the student representative for EOA. And I would like to circle back to what I talked about last meeting, about doing an event for the students that are having a hard time connecting with their peers who are being online. This is important because it would help the students out a great deal, both mentally and emotionally, as well as improve their online learning experience. Doing this would also give them the opportunity to build up their self-esteem and work on their social skills. We're nearing the end of the trimester and entering a new one, so I feel this would be the perfect time for such an event, and I would appreciate the help and feedback. We would need a space to hold it, food and drinks, and some plans, specifics with staff.
Thanks, Ren. Battheffing?
Yes, I forgot to mention, I'm from Churchill High School, and also I wanted to say something else. Next week, there is going to be our BSC, like FSC, which is Black Student Union, and Nomen and I remember, I mean, past couple days, they're going to have a collab, and they're really excited about that.
Thank you, Ren. I'm sorry. Thank you, Battheffing, for adding that information. I believe that is all of our student representatives. Next up, we have items raised by the audience. The school board receives written comments by email at board@4j.lane.edu and sets aside time in each regular board meeting to hear public comment. Community members can sign up to speak to the board by submitting their request online at 4j.lane.edu/board/publiccomment, or contact the superintendent's office. The deadline is the Monday before each meeting. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes and cannot give their time to another speaker. The timer will count up, indicating when the speaker's time is up. Speakers may offer objective comments or criticism about district operations and programs. For complaints about individuals, including district staff and board members, the district has a board policy and complaint process. Please contact the superintendent's office at 541-790-7707 for more information about submitting a formal complaint. Please extend the same courtesy to members of the community. Debbie, can you introduce our first speaker?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Our first speaker tonight is Shira Fadeley.
Hello, and greetings to the superintendent, support staff, board members, and our greater community. My name is Shira Fadeley, and I'm proud to serve as our district's K-12 music TOSA. This March is the 38th Annual Music in Our Schools Month, and so that's sort of my hook to being here. So I'm going to give you some information about 4J musical successes. It was challenging assignment to fit into three-minute time slot. There's so much that I could tell you. Should I celebrate the students who just this last weekend qualified to participate at the OSSAA State Solo and Small Ensemble Contest? One of the high school representatives alluded to that. Should I thank the Eugene Education Foundation for supporting district-wide elementary participation at the Eugene Symphony Linkup Youth Concert, which will be happening on March 14th at the Holt Center? This is a participatory experience where students have worked with their school music teachers so they can play recorder and sing along with the symphony. Should I tell you about the remarkable work of our teachers, about the amazing lessons our elementary teachers shared during professional development, about a fascinating sequence that not only taught many musical things, but was an amazing tool to aid students in decoding language and tracking and identifying words? Should I point out again all the research that points to music's amazing support of brain development, SEL, community cooperation, and building an individual self-esteem? Each of these ideas could take up much more time than three minutes, so expect to receive an email from me that outlines our district music offerings with a lot more detail. I did have the thought of having you sing with me to update your serotonin levels and to get a little oxytocin going with you. I don't have time to really teach you a song. If you don't know Farajaka, it is like you can do the second line, like I'll do the first line, you do the second if you do know it. You can sing it in any language, music being the universal language. Any language that you know it in, or you can just loop along. I'm going to do it on loop. So if I, I'm going to sing each line twice. You can sing with me the second time. You can sing with me the whole time. Here we go. Good for you, and that is good for you. And just as a final thought, I want to say a big thank you to the elementary directors, Melissa Yubara. Is that my time? Okay. And Jeff Johnson, and Tina Fisher, my PE TOSA partner, and Sabrina Gordon for their time and thoughtful work on the elementary music and PE guidance that has gone out to buildings. The elementary specialists in music and PE teach every student in the building and are consistent for many of those students throughout the years of their time in the building. And the guidelines help to maximize the positive impact that these teachers can have on the students and on the building culture. Thank you for your time. I appreciate the chance this week with you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for speaking.
Thank you, Shira. Our next guest is Regina Mitchell. Is Regina here?
For the timer, just.
My timer timed out.
All right. All right, hello, 4J school board. Thank you. Thank you for the time to come and speak to you. I'm a middle school teacher here in 4J, and as someone who was born and raised in Eugene, attended 4J schools kindergarten through 12th grade, and returning to teach in 4J, I'm honored to be here. I know you've had the opportunity to speak with Sabrina Gordon, our EEA licensed union representative, about an issue that speaks loudly to me as a fairly new mom of a one-year-old and a four-year-old. People, many people know that childcare is expensive. How expensive? Well, in total, our household pays $2,825 per month in childcare tuition, and that is, of course, minus any date nights that we can try and have. I wouldn't be able to afford it on just my teacher's salary without my husband. And so I'm being candid about the cost because this is our real life, this is our real-life situation as of this moment. It's very stressful. Childcare is literally double our monthly mortgage payments. There have been many times that, as a 4J teacher, I've considered leaving my position because the cost of childcare and the stress of serving their needs has been so great. Then I think about my students who have grown to depend on me as a reliable, caring adult in their lives. I've spent days and months cultivating those relationships with my middle school students. Childcare availability is close to none as of this moment. There's only a few childcare centers that are actually operating in Eugene, and those ones are in danger of closing. I'm on two childcare boards in my free time right now, and candidly, these centers are starting to stay open. And the Lamont Valley has been deemed as a childcare desert. I'm asking you to continue considering adding childcare as an added benefit for employees, both classified and licensed. Number one, good childcare is hard to find. Number two, it's very expensive. Number three, many childcare centers are starting to close. As a 4J board, are you ready to break new ground, attract and retain new 4J employees, including staff and teachers? If you want the best of the best in attracting and retaining qualified candidates who will stay with Eugene 4J, please, please, please start to consider the childcare angle. We would be getting a jump on other school districts in Oregon. There are a few small rural districts who are already doing this, and they have much success. If Eugene 4J were to implement this, huge waves of reliable workforce would appear, and they would stay. Thank you. I look forward to any possible conversations around this as we go into contract negotiations next year. It would be a huge missed opportunity if you don't at least consider something supported by the state legislatures, the union, and a 4J teacher sitting in front of you today. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker tonight is Harry Sanger. Harry Sanger here? Okay. How about David Eichel?
Good evening. I was born and raised in Eugene, a community largely populated by very nice people. In 2016, when Dun Hall was demaimed, I began documenting the fraudulent history that is not only being distributed, but often being distributed by public institutions using public funds with no concern for the honest portrayal of history. Professor Frederick Dunn was a kind, brilliant, caring individual, was mourned across Oregon when he died in 1937 after a lifetime of public service. Twenty-five years later, at the request of the noted civil rights activist, the old President Arthur Pliny, Dun Hall was dedicated in 1962. No one opposed the honoring of Dunn, who's both religiously ecumenical and a proud member of one of the most heroic abolitionist families in America. Among the materials I refer each to the board, note the local newspaper articles where Dunn played the role of Little Harry, the black slave child of age three in the Eugene production of local Tom's Cabin, in where he describes being the descendant of a generation of abolitionists. Not until 30 years later, in 1992, in a non-periodic article, was Dunn first falsely described as the chairman of the local KKK chapter. I documented that the 2016 UVO Dunn Report is a little more than a sick joke and that it contains indications of conscious fraud on the part of its authors. In 2022, the disgraceful Race New Change exhibit at the Lane County History Museum, loaded with misinformation outright lies open. For example, the well-respected Reverend Frank Jennings, the rector of St. Mary's Episcopal Church, is falsely described in the exhibit as having marched with others spewing hateful rhetoric against blacks, Catholics, and Jews. This is nonsense. There were no such marches in Eugene. Jennings was elected to the Eugene School Board in 1923. He subsequently became the chairman. While he served, the school board voted to name a school in honor of the late Francis Willard, the iconic head of the Women's Christian Stampedums Union, not Jefferson Davis. I'm speaking to you because as individuals who are interested in education, we should know that historically enacted and defamatory narratives are being promoted. I request that the board make an effort to ensure that information is provided to the teachers within the district documenting this misinformation. Finally, Professor Dunn was one of the finest human beings to ever live in Eugene. Please do something to publicly honor him. It need not cost anything. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Harry Sanger, are you online? I saw something named Harry.
So, Ms. McKim, this is Harry Sanger. I actually had expressed that I was not interested in providing public comment tonight, so carry on, please.
Okay, sorry about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is online. It will be Melanie Namkun. You with us, Melanie?
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can.
All right. Many of you know me. I'm Melanie Namkun. I'm a member of OSEA Chapter 1, and I would like to speak about how much we appreciated the concerted efforts of so many of the board members around our contract negotiation this past fall. We are all so appreciative of the individual and combined efforts made to ensure that many of our requests were approved. And it has been painful to watch what has happened to the board in the past few months. And I would like to encourage you all to remember what it was like to work together on something so important to the functioning of our schools. And I do appreciate Dr. Dai's appreciation of classified staff and his very kind words earlier. This is the first time we have had the type of cohesive purpose on the board that currently exists. It is a shame to waste so much time and conflict over interpersonal issues when there are so many issues that need to be addressed. The relationships we have with those we work with are as important as the relationships we have with our families, and we need to treat them that way. If we don't take the time to tend to our relationships, they dissolve and are difficult to repair. But they can be repaired if we all make the effort. I believe that you all understand how important a fully functioning board is to the greater community, particularly our students. It is so critical that each one of you work to find a way to address the priorities of our schools and work out your differences so that you can work together. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker tonight is Larry Lewin. He's online.
Thank you, board members and Superintendent Andy, for this opportunity to speak. It's an honor to be speaking with my fellow community members, teachers, classified workers. Thank you all for being here tonight. I'm Larry Lewin, retired 4J teacher, now a member of Cape. Literacy instruction is critically important to 4J as it is to any school district. The ability to learn how to read, which leads to the ability to read to learn, is a key skill we need all district students to master. I'll simplify my take on how to accomplish this in two minutes, not three minutes. Number one, teach phonics. That's right, the ability to know what... That's right, the ability to know what the letters of the English alphabet make is the code that all readers need to crack. It's how I learned to read back in the 1950s, reading Dick and Jane Basil readers with controlled phonetically simple words. It worked for me and millions of other kids. And as an elementary teacher in 4J in the late 1970s and early 80s, I had fourth graders who needed more work on the sound letter correspondences. Teaching phonics explicitly in an intentional way is very good practice. Point number two, but phonics is not enough. It serves as a foundation to reading, but it cannot be the sole approach to reading instruction because reading is so much more than sounding out the words. The reader also must make meaning from those words to construct comprehension. Reading instruction therefore requires teaching our students problem-solving strategies to help them engage with the author to extract and build meaning. That's what adult readers do. So both approaches are vitally necessary. If the current push for "the science of reading" means both approaches, then I support it. If it means a phonics-only approach or a phonics-dominated approach, then I will warn us to be careful about hopping onto the next politically motivated bandwagon. To learn more about reading instruction in 4J, board members, do what I did. Reach out to Curriculum Director Eric Anderson, who leads our literacy TOSSAs. Conversations like I had with TOSSA Katie Stiles greatly increased my understanding and my understanding of where the district is headed. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry, and everyone who took the time. I see Debbie has one more for us.
I do, if you want to allow an extra one.
Yes, please.
Sure, Charlotte St. Clair, come on.
Good evening. I'm Charlotte St. Clair. I am a student from Rhode Island High School. I'm here to talk about some of the racist acts that have been happening in our community lately. This past weekend, we had a basketball game at Junction City. The Junction City students were targeting and harassing our people of color that were on the basketball team and in the audience. They were using the N-word and calling them very negative words. And after the basketball game, they even attacked one of our students. Our student then attacked and defended themselves as well. That student is in a way in trouble and not the other students. We had a female student that is Black enter the classroom the other day. And this group of white lawyers were just ordering in the hallway. She asked if we should get past them. And they called her the N-word and cornered her and started laughing at her. This isn't the first time we've had this happen. We've had many students of color being attacked and targeted at our school and in this community. We had kids from Junction City after the basketball game drive over to North and threaten to attack one of our students. It is disheartening to see this school board has done nothing about this and that our teachers are unaware of this. I have mentioned this to many of my teachers, and none of them were aware of any of this happening. Many of students in my school are unaware of the acts that are being committed towards their fellow classmates. Many of our Black students are afraid to come to school and are afraid to be there. I hate seeing my fellow classmates not wanting to come to school simply because they're afraid they're going to be attacked and hate-pranked. I, my teachers said that they are unaware. Nobody is telling them anything. They are always finding out very last. Students know before them, nobody is letting them know. Our teachers are unable to help their students because nobody's making them aware. I would like to see more, I would like the board to have more, to take more accountability for our students of color and allow them to have a safe place to learn. All students should be able to learn. All students should be able to have a learning peace and not worry about their fellow classmates attacking them or getting hate-pranked. I watched a student cry in our BSC meeting, explaining how she was cornered by white children, saying that she was afraid to come to school. She cannot leave her classrooms until hallways are completely clear. She has to go to Ms. Ann, who is our only Black female staff, to feel safe in our school. I don't think any student should ever feel unsafe in their school. It is appalling that this is just happening. And they know the children who did this to her. They are aware of the children who are committing these crimes. They are not doing anything about it. Those children are able to go home and sleep peacefully and continue doing these acts because they're not being reprimanded and not being told no. Our Black students are going home traumatized, scared to come to school, unable to learn because they're always under fear that they are going to get attacked the next time they leave class. Many of our students are unaware that this even happened. We do not have enough safe places for our Black students or anybody of people, any person of color in our school. I really would like to see something happen about this. I don't want it to just get swept under the rug and not talked about again. I have so many friends that tell me that they're scared. They don't want to be attacked. They get so overwhelmed when talking about this stuff because they're afraid that if they talk about it more, they're going to be shunned and told to be quiet because their opinions shouldn't matter just simply because they are Black and that they're treated as lower-class people simply because of that. I hate seeing my friends, my fellow students, have to be in fear. And I, I'm white and I can't like, I don't experience this, so I can't be like, I relate to this, because I don't. And it's simply unacceptable that we're allowing this to happen. They've been fighting for their freedom and to prove that they are citizens for over 100 years, and we're still uprooting like this. And this is something that comes from just letting these white people, white children, get away with this. They're learning that it's okay to do this because they aren't getting reprimanded. They're just being let go and allowed to continue having, to continue hate-priding our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Clair.
Thank you. We now move on to comments by employee groups. Up first, I have Sabrina Gordon, speaking on behalf of EEA.
Thank you, Maya. Thank you, board members. My name is Sabrina Gordon, and I'm the president of Eugene Education Association. I just want to start by acknowledging the bravery of students who speak up. And I'm really glad that we have kids who are brave enough to do that. I just have two quick things to mention this evening. One is regarding the staffing allocations that schools received last week. EEA members are expressing shock, particularly at the elementary level, that staffing for next year shows significant reductions in hours for educational assistance. Meeting the needs of our students has been a struggle all year in every school. Some of this struggle has been the result of unfilled classified positions. And some can be likely attributed to shifts in the model for providing special education services without adequate staffing, as well as the high level of social-emotional needs of many students. Just a few short months ago, the district responded to these intense needs by temporarily reassigning dozens of staff members to infuse some buildings with support. That infusion of support is no longer there. And while there has been some stabilization of those acute student needs, staff in our schools cannot fathom how reducing classified hours will set students or staff up for success in the coming year. Certainly, there must be a way to make budgetary shifts that will prioritize more support for students in each building rather than less. The other request I have is in regards to the draft calendar coming before you this evening for the 2023-24 school year. There are two midterm grading days listed, November 9th and April 12th. The district's current practice is to give teachers half a day to do midterm grades. And then the other half is used for professional development. Looking ahead to next year, the new high school schedule is going to significantly increase the number of students each teacher is responsible for, by about 60 students. In order to create a structure that allows educators time to give meaningful feedback to an additional 60 students, teachers are requesting that these two midterm grading days be dedicated only for grading. EEA surveyed impacted members, and 98% responded that they need eight hours to do grades on those days instead of giving half the day over to another task. EEA's request is that at the next meeting, the board support adoption of the draft calendar with a small change, giving teachers eight hours for grading on these two midterm days. There's no cost associated with this request, and it would support the joint efforts by EEA and 4J to provide meaningful student feedback and more equitable grading practices.
Thank you, Sabrina. Next up, we have Sheila, representing OSEA.
Thank you. So emotional from that student speaker, so. So, like you said, my name is Sheila Wyer, and I'm OSEA, Eugene Chapter One President. Thank you Superintendent Dye for mentioning the Classified Appreciation Week. That week, we also, that week, we also have our, our membership drive. And in the past, the different schools that we would go to with our membership drive, they, break rooms would be decorated and have gifts and snacks. It just would look fabulous, right? And most of the time, this is done by school PTO or licensed staff as well as too. What most of the parent organizations don't know that it is also this month that classified employees are informed if there is maybe a reduction in their hours or assignment changes. So this can be an extra stressful time. So whatever way of honoring or celebrating our classified staff this month, know that it really is appreciated. Sorry. I think something us folks don't know either is that OSEA also has some legislative priorities that directly reflect the needs of classified. One of those priorities is a support package for classified workers who work in special ed. OSEA's recent work survey showed workers who supported special education programs are at a higher risk of injury than others. The survey results reflected 40% of respondents said that they have been injured supporting a student with high needs. There are clear steps that the state can take to minimize injuries to deliver the best support for all Oregon students, employees, and employees who support special ed needs. One, access to relevant information, including individual IEPs and paid time to work, to prepare for working with the assigned students. Two, assess, excuse me, assess to adequate training, access to adequate training and appropriate equipment. Three, comprehension. Sorry. Compensation at a level that is competitive with other industries and reflects the skills needed to do this work well, including a pay differential that, thank you, increases with skill level to recognize the challenges in these positions and minimum staffing levels to support these critical frontline workers. And more importantly, to ensure all students, including students with the most significant needs, are supported. Currently, Oregon schools are struggling to recruit and retain classified staff, especially those who support special education. OSEA members have stated positions to serve our students throughout the pandemic. The state needs to invest in special education now to best ensure that we can provide the quality education and respect our students and members deserve. OSEA can do better to provide equal education, excuse me, Oregon can do better to provide equal education to all students with special needs by supporting the frontline workers who are the hands-on caregivers to some of Oregon's most medically and economically fragile students. On passage of this education support package, this will strengthen the daily needs of both students and staff. This next Monday, approximately 150 OSEA members, including myself, will be in Salem to push our legislative priorities, which of course are to fully fund education, but also the special education support package that I just mentioned. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. And you'll be hearing from me again in a while. I also have printed out some flyers with that information that I just spoke. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sheila. Last up, we have Seth Baughlin from MAPS.
Good evening, Board Chair Rivasa, School Board members, Superintendent Dye, and everyone in the listening audience tonight. My name is Seth Baughlin, and I'm the president of MAPS. As most of you know by now, MAPS is our Eugene School District Employee Group that represents our 4J managers, administrators, professionals, and supervisors. Next week is Classified School Employee Appreciation Week, as you heard from Dr. Dye. And given the timing of this board meeting, MAPS also wanted to take the opportunity to preemptively recognize our classified employees for their essential working 4J. There is no possible way we can run this school district without the dedication and talent of our classified employees. They work in every department and every setting within the district. When we talk about keeping the wheels greased so everything keeps moving forward, it's our classified employees who are at the front lines and literally the ones who grease those bearings on the school bus wheels. MAPS is grateful for the pay raise our classified staff received this year and for the board's support in making that happen. We didn't write by our classified employees without paying increase, and it deeply mattered. These are employees who give their hearts and minds into their work. And paying a living wage needs to be maintained for them into the future. Since I am speaking and singing praises of our classified staff, I'd like to also shout out our district efforts on Building a Grow Your Own program. Over the years, I've worked with many employees who started as classified staff, and then some of them decided to get their teaching license to become a teacher. In turn, some of those teachers decided to get an admin license and got hired into MAPS positions. I work in the Student Services Department, where our previous SSD director started as a classified employee before becoming a special ed teacher, then an administrator, and then a director. So, any classified staff who are listening to this and have an interest in becoming a teacher or further climbing the career ladder, please know, we support you. MAPS is quite happy that the district is embarking on Grow Your Own programs to help employees further their educational careers. It's a true win-win for everybody. In closing, thank you greatly to our classified employees. Y'all are absolutely amazing, and you do important work that makes such a huge difference in the lives of kids and making Eugene a community that's long on the limit. We appreciate you. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Seth. Next up on the agenda is comments and committee reports by individual board members.
Are we missing people? I see, I see two empty screens.
Judy is getting something from Sheila and Alicia's deck. Go ahead, Gordon.
Thank you.
First, I want to thank Charlotte Sinclair, the student from North, for the courage and importance of her testimony. It seems similar that we need an emergency work session to address this, and I will make a proposal at the end of this meeting, where we get the power of proposing things for future, to do in the future after this meeting. I also want to thank Regina Mitchell for stressing the importance of childcare benefits for district employees, which I support. And as a way of making that affordable, I also think that it's important for all of us to support the initiative to establish a right to free universal pre-K in Lane County. Mokona County was the first county in the country to establish that last year, and there's an initiative to make that happen in Lane County, and that's also something critical. I want to give a special thanks and appreciation to the Transportation Department employees. As most people don't know, like when the weather has been chaotic for the last two weeks, and all of us parents are waiting to find out if school is on or delayed or bus routes are changed, the way that decision gets made is that a group of people are getting up at two in the morning to go out in teams and drive all the bus routes and see what the conditions are, and then come in and work their regular work shift. So just the group of people have been going above and beyond and more than usual this year due to the weather we've had. I said this before, but I just want to say again on the record that Rob Hess and I had a Zoom meeting with Eric DeFries, and that he is preparing a work session for the board to brief us on laws around public records and public meeting law. And among the, among the questions we asked him through specifically are requirements of public records, specifically including use of Signal, Snapchat, or other digital platforms that don't retain records, the status of cell phone, voicemail, and text messages, the question of board members using email to communicate with the board as a whole, whether by initiating messages or replying all, and appropriate response to very broad informational requests, including estimating time or cost to respond to large requests. So in that, and he said he thought he would do that within a month, so we're expecting that to be scheduled for sometime early April. I was able to visit Madison Middle School today together with Tom DiLiberto and Jenny Jonak, board candidates, to visit both in the classroom and with teachers to see how special education and the inclusion model is working. And probably surprising to no one, there are very serious staffing problems, particularly with the shortage of EAs. I also have been surprised to hear about cuts in EAs in the past year and proposed for the coming year, and I look forward to talking about this when we get to the budget in a couple of months and hope we can have a serious conversation in the budget process about how to increase rather than reduce this kind of staffing. The Seattle Public Schools have filed a lawsuit against major social media companies, including Facebook, Instagram, TikTok, YouTube, and Snapchat for knowingly harming the mental health of teenagers, both through their content and knowingly addictive and harmful algorithms. The suit seeks both changes in how the algorithms work and also money from those companies to fund the mental health services for teenagers who have been harmed by this, and I would like to see our district join that soon. I will also be proposing in the coming year to increase the number of phoneless lunch periods, obviously with exceptions for families who need that form of communication. And even though this will probably lose me the vote with my daughter and all of her friends, I think this is a small step, but having some more social time that is not electronic media, but just face-to-face talking or hanging out is something I think will at least in a small way help support mental health. Finally, tomorrow, we'll be testifying with the legislature in Salem in support of a bill that calls for construction contractors doing school construction projects anywhere in the state to provide health insurance and retirement benefits to their employees, to increase the share of women and workers of color among their employees, and to increase the use of apprentices on school construction work. If passed, this will both increase the number of family wage jobs in our community and increase the number of apprenticeship opportunities for our high school graduates looking to enter high-wage construction careers. Thank you.
Thank you, Gordon and Curie.
Hi, thanks, Maya. I'd like to get these over with, public speaking and all. I did want to say thank you too to the transportation team. It's as a student with kids, every day we wake up and have wonderful information and just it's been pretty seamless with how this is working. So thank you to all of the transportation team for taking care of that. I had a chance this month to go sit through some of the OBAB competitions that have been taking place around our district. That's the Oregon Battle of the Books. I wanted to say thank you to the parent volunteers and the teachers and all of the students who have taken so much time to read. I think there were fifteen books on the roster this year, and it's been great to see the kind of enthusiasm that's been put in for this kind of a literacy program. I would like to say, I think Roscoe, as you brought it up last year, last week in the comments around our excessive testing, and I would like to see programs such as these extend to things like science fairs and art fairs and other kinds of a subject matters that aren't just purely on books, though, although I am an avid reader, so you all can probably see from my bookshelf behind me. So it's been wonderful to see those OBAB teams participate, so thank you. I also wanted to bring up, so next week is International Women's Day, and every year I have a struggle with this because I want to celebrate, one, all of the teachers in our public schools, and about seventy-five percent are still women, and to celebrate the work and the time and the effort they put in to creating our future generations and influencing them. I sometimes lament that I think the lack of attention sometimes paid to the care and needs of the teachers are sometimes because they're women, and looking at legislation that's been passed at our national governments and stuff in the last couple of years has not encouraged me on that. So I wanted to take the time to at least acknowledge that whatever we can do to our local school teachers to be able to support them, and this goes out to the classified staff as well too on there. It has to be a combination of celebrating our teachers with active and actionable support and tangible things on here. I think after COVID, we were doing a lot of good praises, and then it kind of just dripped off for a second. So I wanted to thank Sabrina for her comments on that, because I do think giving time back to the teachers for what they're asking for is a tangible way of supporting that too. And I also wanted to address Gina, who spoke earlier today about the lack of pay that supports teachers in our communities. I looked up some, some stats, and I think it's around like one in five public school teachers are still taking second jobs or are reliant on a second income to be able to support themselves. Considering the amount of work and responsibilities we put on the care and influence that we want these teachers to have on our students, we need to be able to make sure that they themselves are cared for and supported and can have a living wage as well too. As, so I wanted to just bring that out there on there. The other thing I wanted to address with this is because our brave student who spoke up on the racism, looking at public school statistics, again, amongst the seventy-five percent who are women, there's still seventy-five percent of our teachers are white, public school teachers. Nine percent are Hispanic, seven percent are black. This is across the country, and less than two percent are Asian. The student who had spoken, I'm sorry, I forgot your name. You spoke so wonderfully. I just, I don't have your name on screen, so I wanted to just say thank you for that, but also point out that it's not just about having the right teachers in the classroom, it is about having safe spaces for the students. So looking at Grow Your Own programs, looking for places where we can actually, it's not just like, hey, we've got a representation here. It has to be representation that actually is providing real tangible support for our students in the classroom. And as a board, we've taken a look at equity and bringing these things in, and I just wanted to just reiterate that I really am saddened and discouraged by those conversations, and I really hope that we are going to be able to take actionable items to address that. And then lastly, International Women's Day, I did want to say thank you to my fellow women board members, the five of y'all who are all actually helping me to manage a full-time job. Some of us own businesses, some of us are taking care of special needs families, some of us are giving all of our time for volunteer efforts and are managing multiple responsibilities at the same time. And, but all of you have been very supportive of me being on here and sharing my opinions and being able to actually feel like we're making a difference on this. So I appreciate all of you as well too, and just want to say thanks.
Thanks, Curie. Judy. There's really a lot to talk about, and I just also want to add my thanks. Thank you, Superintendent, for the proclamation for the classified staff. It's so well deserved. We couldn't run our district without you all. And I'll tell you, I was shocked to realize that third of our kids are transported. That really surprised me. So it is a, and I don't know how many kids eat in schools, how many kids, you want everyone benefits from clean bathrooms and lovely schools. So thank you so much. And to Charlotte Sinclair, the student who did speak out, and it was very heartfelt and really hard to imagine this is going on. So I know I would like to have more information and our staff look into, you know, our administrators in the school, if they really are unaware, why is that? And I'd like to learn more, so. But today is March first, and the first day of National Developmental Disability Awareness Month, which actually started in nineteen ninety-seven. The goal of this month is to raise awareness about inclusion of people with developmental disabilities in all aspects of our community life and the barriers that people with disabilities still face, which are many. So to celebrate this month, the Eugene 4J Mind Body Divergence Alliance is hosting a Strength and Neurodiversity Festival on Wednesday, March fifteenth. That's in two weeks a day we're meeting, but it's from six to eight thirty at South Eugene High School. It's free, fun for everyone, games, prizes, activities, and entertainment for families and students, and everyone is welcome. So please consider attending that March fifteenth at South Eugene High School, six, eight thirty. And thank, thank you to the group that's hosting that. Last week, the report on suicides in Lane County was released. It's a thirty-nine-page report, and it can be found on the Lane County website under what's new. The data in the report confirms what we already know, that there are many, many people in our community experiencing a huge amount of pain and too many, too many people in too much pain. The report provides important information for each member of our community, and it raises awareness and provides information about suicide, the causes and signs, and most importantly, it encourages community members to get involved in prevention efforts by providing concrete guidance for people to create a healthy community and prevent suicides from occurring. The report was published in February of twenty twenty-three, and it covers twenty years, two thousand to twenty twenty. And the rate of suicide in Lane County was sixty-five percent greater than that in the US, than the US average, and twenty-one percent greater than the state of Oregon's average. Youth and adults under twenty-five years of age represent ten percent of all suicides. Males die from suicide four times as often in all, in all age groups, and firearms are involved in fifty-five percent of the suicides for youth. And there's a lot in this report, and I just want to share a couple of important takeaways. Probably the most critical message for me that I feel needs to get out is that talking about suicide is safe before, during, and after a time of crisis. Talking about suicide with people who are thinking about suicide provides them with a sense of relief. It demonstrates respect and acknowledges their pain. You will not make things worse or do something wrong by taking, talking to someone that you are concerned about. Schools also have an important role to play, obviously, to prevent suicide, but promoting connection, trust, and inclusion. Using a lens of trauma-informed care and paying close attention to every individual is important to ensure that the needs of students, staff, and families are all considered. For our youth and our schools, everyone should be involved, parents, staff, and students. We have some trainings and supports available through the district for each one of the groups. I know I've attended some of those. And I want to specifically highlight the Sources of Strength program that was mentioned, both in the report, and I know Grant mentioned it tonight in his comments. It's a best-practice youth suicide prevention program that uses peer social networks to promote healthy norms and culture and prevent suicide, bullying, and substance abuse problems. It supports students to develop help-seeking behaviors and promotes connections between peers and trusted adults. I think we are on the right track in our school district, and we have, we have so much more to do to promote, we need purpose and connection in our schools and our community for all students, their families, and staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Does anybody want to go next? Michelle, my moral.
Since our last meeting, I attended an in-person meeting at Kelly Middle School to talk about solutions with the Kelly and YG co-location, and there's another meeting scheduled for this Friday, and I hope it will be as well-attended as the February seventeenth meeting. I appreciated being able to meet in person at the school. It made a big difference for me. We are still in the process of gathering input, and I'm hoping there will be possibilities presented that will enable both schools to operate as they did prior to co-location with all the instruction and gathering spaces that they require. This is a district responsibility. I think that the board feels very strongly about prioritizing it, and thanks to all the staff who have been investing their time and energy into these meetings. I also went to visit two of the elementary school libraries that have libraries. I went to see Howard and Holt, and it was a pleasure to see Debbie Feifer again and to meet Julie Hopkins and Rob Cortez. They all welcome any board members who are interested to go visit anytime. I think you'll see that they have added a lot of life and energy into the libraries. Watching the students reading and interacting, making origami bookmarks, checking out books, and hearing their enthusiasm around OBAB was joyful. As always, I'm encouraging the district to invest in school libraries with the funding that goes directly into library staff instruction and materials. It's shown that investment in school libraries is directly related to improvement in literacy. I wanted to briefly comment on a video that was shown at the last board meeting. I personally would have liked some advance notice on the topic of microaggressions, something that I experience often. The video was presented by one of our, our white fellow members, and edited, it was edited by white staff, and it just revealed that, you know, there, there's a lack of understanding. And I don't in any way assume that intentions were not well-meaning. I sincerely believe that there was no harm intended, but it just shows that our community requires to learn the nuances and complexities around race, gender, ethnicity, and all the constructs that create this, suffice of this. I've also been hearing that students are requesting BIPOC counselors and staff. I think that is a priority, a priority of the district. We need more multicultural training. It's difficult to navigate around these challenging issues, such as the ones that Charlotte Sinclair mentioned. And we need to be very clear that it's not a school issue, it's not a district issue, it's a community issue. As Melanie Nemcon had mentioned, the need to prioritize relationship building and to invest in the process of repair is imperative. We need to start talking about these things in relationship and collaboration. Thanks. Thanks.
Thank you, Michelle. Laurel?
So a few things. When we have, when it's been said that four board members are using Signal, and then those four board members vote against a conversation about it. A conversation, not a decision. A conversation. That's obstruction. That shows, well, not good intent. I, I want to be on a board when there's good, where there is good intent. I want to be on a board where people hold themselves accountable. Absolutely could have modified it to show that there are other media, but that was a red herring. Yes, we need to talk about communication, but the real problem is...
Point of order, we're, we have a rule against assuming intent or intention.
No, we do not have a, a rule about that. I get to talk about my, what I say in this time if we are...
Tools that are not tied to bad intent to each other.
Well, our racist board member Gordon Leifer is stopping the black female from talking. Please, everybody knows that.
When he says point of order, we need to stop and address the point of order.
Of course, yes. If only you would do that for me. That would be awesome.
Yeah, we have it on video that we do.
No, shut down a whole meeting.
Laurel, again, on pages 391 to 394.
Obviously, you have an intent in this. But I, if you want a point of order, and Maya doesn't get to be the only one who decides this, then it good, needs to go to the board. And if everybody wants to shut down my opinion as a black board member, please vote for that, like you voted against our racial harassment policy. This looks great. You guys look great. You look great, particularly Gordon, considering you're the one who told everybody to use Signal.
Laurel, point of order was called. And Gordon outlined the rule that was being broken. And his point of order stands.
No, there needs to be a vote.
If you want to appeal it, we can take it straight to a vote.
I challenge it.
Okay. All those in favor of upholding the point of order...
What is the point of order?
...of Robert's rules that prohibits us from attacking the members' motives, raise your hand and say aye.
I, can you explain how I attack a member's motive? Can you can explain how I attacked a member's motive?
There's, there's no discretion on appeals of decorum, point of orders.
I don't, I believe you're making things up as you go. Considering you did, you pretend you don't know Robert's rules when it comes to me. But now all of a sudden, you have new Robert's rules.
We, we are going to a recess. We will be back shortly.
There needs to be a vote for a recess. Unless there's safety issue, there needs to be a vote. I know you want to shut down the black board member's voice. I know. It's unfortunate that you can't right now.
I, I can actually call for a recess if the meeting is being disruptive.
No, it's dangerous and against safety. That was the...
We heard on disruptive meetings can be, can be called, a recess can be called by the chair.
No, it is bound to be. I call for a vote.
I call for, I call for the board to take a brief recess.
And then I'll continue talking afterwards. In fact, I can continue talking now as we're still on. I, you know, I'm on a racist board. I'm dealing with it the best I can. The people in town that agree with Gordon Leifer and Maya Rabasa and Ms. Elshu are the people, are white, mostly white supremacists. We have issues in our district. That student that talked was so important because this is what is happening on our board right now. No one is listening when the black person is saying bad things are happening.
Have we been gavelled in?
Not yet.
The recess has ended and the meeting will come to order. Before we restart, I would like to remind the board and share with the community that on November 16th, 2022, we passed Resolution 2023-05, which gives the responsibility to the chair to recess or reconvene the meeting in virtual form or adjourn the meeting if a meeting is deemed disruptive. So hopefully we continue without the need to recess or reconvene or adjourn. But again, that is Resolution 2023 and it's passed on November 16th. I'd like to return to the portion of the agenda where we were interrupted. And Laurel, I believe you were in the middle of your remarks.
Yes, I was just beginning my remarks. I would also like to say that in Robert's Rules of Order, that it does say a decision of the Association of the Board of Directors may not be challenged because of the, because the rules of orders you were using are not the rules of orders that we, that are part of our policy. Unless a person entitled to be heard was denied the right to be heard and raised an objection at the meeting in which the right to be heard was denied. That is what just happened. So in our meeting, one person, we are seven equal people in this meeting. One person does not get to decide intent. That is not how Robert's Rules of Order work. So please, all of you, I know there is bad actions on this board. The want to shut me down and to push me out of this board is happening. I see it, it's obvious. We just had an extraordinary long recess for a very short amount of time. And the resolution that you're talking about, I believe, was a safety resolution if people went to take over the board meeting. So unless I'm speaking of a different one, but I believe that's the one we voted on. So that is not even being talked about in the way it, what, what we voted on. It was, or else it would have been read out for what it is. But it was, that's not what it is. It's called for board safety. So my other remarks are about the, the student that was talking, who talked about the safety of black kids in schools. And this was in a great example, what just happened, of what happens in our schools. I'm a figurehead. I know I'm not very important. I don't think everybody else on this board realizes that. But we are here for students. So every time I point out racism, inappropriate behavior, unethical behavior, I am pointing out what happens to our students. We have a culture in 4J that is toxic. It is very normal for the bullies, if they look a certain way especially, to not be held accountable. That is what that student was talking about. And for all the board members who are like, oh, she's amazing, I love it. Yes, she is. Because she was speaking truth to power and you can't just clap, but also then shut down the black board member's voice because you don't like that she talks about your use of signal. It's unethical. And one person doesn't get to decide intent. That is unethical. We have a board of seven people. It has been hijacked. We need to be a board of seven people who are making these decisions together. I'm more than happy to make these decisions with seven other people. This is not a difference of, of, of offense or anything like that. Racism is real. It's happening in our schools all the time. It is ignored continually by administrators and educators. There are a few people that raise their hand, but they're told to be silenced. I know for a fact, because I've had educators this week tell me when I'm speaking about the racism I am dealing with from Raya Rivas and Gordon Laffer, who have said, I need to, I am egotistical and selfish and I need to sit back and listen to Maya because she knows more. This person doesn't know me. When you make decisions about somebody without knowing them, but only knowing what they look like and knowing a few things that they've said, you have made a biased decision. That is what racism looks like. Feeling that you can do that to somebody just because of the way they look. I have been pushed off the Mental Health Committee, the Student Voice Committee, and the Charter Committee. I believe, and this is intent, that I am being pushed off this board. That is the want. And it's not necessary. People can just look at their behavior. We could all be emotionally mature people and look at their behavior and what you're doing, because ego is getting in the way of good behavior. And we, I came here because I really wanted to change this culture. I wanted our special education students to be in a school district where they were valued. They are still not. They are, I'm going to repeat that, our special education students still are not. Our board voted not to follow policy. When our board voted not to follow racial harassment policy, they sent a signal to they sent a signal to many, many people that they were not safe in this district. And they sent a signal to the bullies that they were very safe, because the bullies are the ones who said, "Please don't-- don't vote for this." So all I was asking for was help and for us to look at our behaviors. We are not doing it right, but we could. I am asking for very legitimate things, and I am being silenced with bad behavior. I appreciate that I got to finish this time. It was unnecessary the first time.
Thanks, Laurel. Alicia?
I thought it was Gordon. Sorry.
I think we're--
Sorry, it was a while ago. Okay, first, I hear the roadshow is rockin' good, and everybody should see it. Andy, I'm talking about the roadshow. I heard there was music. Right? Yeah. I-- I heard it was good. I appreciate it. Childcare, she's-- she left already. It was like forty years ago that county opened Oak Street and gave a discount to our county employees. And I-- I don't know why we haven't talked about it. I don't remember it being talked about. But I hope you guys will follow that path. That is, I think, something good to-- to look into and see what-- what the options are, because it may be a way to recruit and retain and also just make life easier for all of our teachers in our class. I honestly thank you so much to students from North. Somebody used the term brave. And I think that's a good-- a good-- for her. I did not have any meetings this last two weeks. I just put my two cents in that I think as a board, we should spend a little time with Robert's Rules. I think rules are what some of us feel much more comfortable in terms of safety with. And the more we know, the better off we'll be. And I can always learn more on Robert's Rules. I just want to clear up one thing regarding the video that I showed last time. There are a couple of things. One, editing. The only thing edited in that video was to make sure there weren't words that was going to get us in trouble with the-- is it the FCC? So that-- that's what was edited out. One of the reasons I appreciate-- not everybody's going to appreciate the video. One of the things that I-- I did appreciate the video for me personally is that as a person who uses wheelchair, as a person with a disability, and is a lesbian, I was depicted in that video. So I am white. That is absolutely true. But I appreciated that I saw myself in that video in two areas. So that was-- that was important. Also, the fact that I appreciate the conversation, I think, would be an interesting one to have as we-- as we talk about microaggressions, actually using the term "micro." I think that is-- I think that's a really good, you know, a very good conversation. I know we didn't edit it out last time, but aggressions may be just your aggressions. And I'm looking forward to-- we can go a little deeper with that. Thanks.
Thank you, Alicia. I want to start my comments off by also thanking Charlotte St. Clair for showing the community what true allyship looks like. Charlotte, your call to action was not only very powerful, but I also commend you for using your privilege to bring this to us. I have had a number of opportunities to engage with students and staff over the past two weeks. I want to first thank Spencer View Middle School Health Teacher Selena Fraser for inviting me to sit down on her classes, giving me the chance to hear from sixth, seventh, and eighth graders about their physical and mental health. This gave me a window into how middle schoolers connect their school experience to their health in both positive and extremely concerning ways. Thank you to the other teachers and groups of students who shared their experiences, celebrations, and concerns with me that day as well. One of my favorite parts of the past two weeks was being invited to join the monthly meeting of the district's speech and language pathologists. I was delighted to witness the speech and language pathologists break into small groups in order to collaborate as folks brought forward tricky cases for suggestions and general support. Seeing the magic that took place in these small groups cemented my support for ensuring all of our practitioners be offered-- afforded time to engage in collaboration, both licensed and classified, along with administration. Along with the sharing of ideas, resources, and insight, the lifting up of colleagues I witnessed taking place in this space is undeniably invaluable to boosting the morale of our SLPs. I participated in a meeting with the majority of the North Region Visioning Committee along with Michelle Shu, focused on the future of Deep Nifty Howard and the Kelly Middle School and Yujin Gokwen Japanese Immersion Elementary School programs. Staff from both schools came to the table to respectfully share needs and visions. What emerged is a shared understanding of some key values that must guide our decision-making regarding these two programs and the future of this site. For example, but not limited to this example, our decision-making must center the value of maintaining YG as an integral member of the North Region community. Similarly, we must center the value of recognizing and honoring the harm imposed on both of these schools due to the process that led to their co-location. Any decision that might compromise these values should not be considered. We meet again on Friday, this time with the full committee. I look forward to continuing this conversation with the inclusion of family and student voice. I would also like to comment on the video shared during board member comments at our last meeting. While I understand and deeply appreciate the intention and spirit behind the sharing of this video, I cannot cosign the simplistic message in this video. I'm troubled by the video's diminishing of the significance that microaggressions hold in the shaping of our social fabric. By simply reducing the concept of a microaggression to something that is annoying, like a mosquito bite, the video fell short. A microaggression is not simply a mere annoyance. As Alicia just said, microaggressions are aggressions, and they are minimizing the addition of the prefix "micro." They're aggressions, full stop. I worry that adding "micro" to the term serves to make the dominant culture group feel a little bit better, a little bit more okay about engaging in these actions. And they are not mere annoyances. They are quite literally toxic. They directly impact our culture by normalizing bias, discrimination, and prejudice. They impact the survival of culture and ethnicity. They negatively impose on the survival of individuals and collective communities. They contribute to the decline of the use of mother tongues and directly impact the loss of language. If the metaphor had centered on the fact that mosquitoes are vectors of such a toxic magnitude that they are considered the deadliest animal on our planet, it might have landed better with me. But to minimize the concept of an aggression to something nearly annoying is to cause damage to the understanding that aggressions are curating our collective society and the destructive values and lens of the dominant culture. So I cannot cosign this message delivered in this video, a message that downplays the significance and impacts of aggressions. The accumulation of aggressions are the quiet and often not-so-quiet workings of attempted cultural destruction. And we have to take it more seriously. I'm thankful for my fellow board members for agreeing. Next up on the agenda is the consent group, Items for Action. There are three items on the consent agenda tonight. Is there a motion? Gordon?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second? Michelle? Moved by Gordon to approve the consent agenda and seconded by Michelle Shu. Is there any discussion? Laurel?
Um, yes, and I'm sorry, I'm having a problem with my computer, so I can't see both things at the same time. Are-- are the February first minutes in that consent agenda? I think they are, as far as my memory serves. I would like it-- I'd like those to be looked at again at the beginning of the meeting, because at the beginning of the meeting, it says that all people were on, and it started at seven, but I didn't get on until seven-thirty. I was-- I heard that other board members had trouble getting on to the meeting as well. And I think it-- I would like it to be reflected that board members also could not see anything that was happening in the room. So-- and now I appreciate that we have a view of the room, and that has been rectified. But it really should be said that there-- there was no way to know what was going on in the room, because it wasn't-- it wasn't said, and it wasn't-- there was no way to see it. So that's the two things that I would like to be updated, because it's-- it doesn't reflect exactly what was going on.
Alicia?
So I just was gonna add a little. We actually were not able to hear you do the flag salute, the land acknowledgement. You called the order, and I think you might have said we were there, because you could see us, but we couldn't hear. So that probably is the detail that needs to be reflected, that we couldn't hear what you were saying in the room. We could see you.
So I believe that what needs to happen is somebody needs to amend the motion to pull that item.
I-- I move that we-- I want to make an amended motion, then we approve the consent agenda minus the minutes of that February first meeting, so that they can be amended in light of the comments the board just made.
Michelle, do you continue the second, please?
Yeah.
Revised motion? Okay, so is there any other discussion? And the motion on the table is to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item one. Moved by Gordon Laver and seconded by Michelle Shu. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, raise your hand and say nay. The motion passes unanimously with votes from Maya Urbasa, Gordon Laver, Alicia Hayes, Judy Newman, Laurel O'Rourke, and Michelle Shu. I'd like to take a moment to note that Kirti Hasijah Akhman is no longer present, and she has been excused from the meeting. So now we believe to be technically correct, somebody needs to make a motion to have the board minutes revised and brought back to our next meeting. Laurel? You're muted, Laurel.
Move to have the board minutes revised to reflect what happened at the beginning of the meeting and be brought back for-- to the consent agenda, I guess.
Does-- do we have a second? Alicia? Okay, Laurel has moved to have the board meeting minutes from February first, two thousand and twenty-three, revised and brought back to our next board meeting for approval and seconded by Alicia Hayes. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, raise your hand and say nay. The board has voted unanimously to have the board meeting minutes from February first revised with five votes from Maya Urbasa, Gordon Laver, Alicia Hayes, Judy Newman, Michelle Shu, and Laurel O'Rourke. Next up on the agenda is the item for-- Go ahead, Gordon.
I just wanted to ask the-- the chair and the superintendent if you think there's anything on the agenda that you might move to another meeting, because it's ten o'clock and we're just starting the part of the agenda. If not, I'll stay till whenever, but it looks like we're in for a long night, and some of these things would be good to have the energy for.
I-- I think if we do the item for future action, where we hear from-- hear about the integrated guidance activities, so we can get feedback from our employee groups. And then we have an item for action to approve a letter from the Legislative Committee. I would support pushing everything back to a future meeting, unless you see something, Superintendent, that needs to happen tonight.
I can support that.
Gordon, Judy?
What I can do, I think, if people want, I can just send a written update of what we're going to share for the Legislative Committee, too. I'll just send it to the board. We can post it in Board Book two with that. So we can take that item away. Okay. People will have a real-time update.
Okay, and it's a standing item. A lot of the legislation is in session, so whatever is timely, you'll-- you can bring to--
That's what I-- I can just email it.
Yes.
Um, so Gordon, would you like to make a motion to officially just have those last two items before we adjourn?
Yes, which-- which are, to be clear, are the Integrated Guidance Proposed Activities from the-- on the legislative-- I think I move for action on them from the legislative side. I still move.
Is there a second? Okay, seconded by Michelle Shu. So the motion on the table is to hear the item for future action on the integrated guidance activities and the item for action to approve the letter written by the Legislative Committee, and we will then adjourn. Is there any discussion? Okay, in that case, all those in favor remanding the agenda to those two items, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously with six ayes from Maya Urbasa, Gordon Laver, Alicia Hayes, Judy Newman, Michelle Shu, and Laurel O'Rourke. In that case, we move to the item for future action, the Integrated Guidance Proposed Activities. I hand it off to you, upper deck.
Thank you. So in the board packet you received, a list of activities that should have been familiar. Don't know if there are any questions related specifically to the proposals. Important to note right now that we are over budget. The intent is to listen to public comment by OSCEA representation, EEA representation, MAPS, questions from the board, and then spend the balance of time between now and the next meeting, continuing to take public comment and refining the budget based on the comments that we receive, so that we come in with a balanced budget and prepared to bring it to you on the fifteenth. I don't know that it serves anyone here to, like, read the list, but I'm happy to answer any questions, and staff are here to answer any questions that you might have about specifically proposed list of activities. And I don't know if it would be helpful to first hear from the folks that are here and make public comment that might put some of the things that are on that list in context, but I leave that up to the board to decide.
Judy?
I just said-- How much money is twenty percent, just in dollars, that we're talking? You said we're twenty percent over in the items above. Where are we looking for?
Two point five million.
Two point five million.
Does anybody else have any input? Okay, then I'll put myself in the queue. I would love to invite our three employee group representatives to come down and share with us. For the listening audience, we're being joined by Sabrina Gordon of EEA, Seth Batlin of MAPS, and Shu Wider from OSCEA to give their opinion on these suggested activities.
I'm gonna start it. Thank you for this opportunity. MAPS, EEA, and OSCEA wanted to jointly address the proposed integrated guidance spending plan on these activities, and we recognize how hard this is. It's-- a district this big has many complex needs, and meaning instructional, SEL, mental health needs, and everything else of our students and all of the staff endeavors. This is a huge task to prioritize how these funds get spent. We want to give a lot of appreciation to everyone involved in building this spending proposal, getting discussed tonight. From the MAPS end, I've heard from our members, we would really like to see a balance of investments that go between the buildings themselves and the center, support staff, and resource. that go between the buildings themselves and the at-center support staff and resources. Obviously, trying to stretch those funds as far as possible to benefit students and utilizing new staffing and resources effectively. MAPS employees, as just reflected with the Big Rocks, we, we already put on class sizes is really important, caseloads, mental health and behavior supports, as well as providing financial support, recruiting work to address historically endangered groups of students. We want it all, we can't have it all, but we want it all, and there's some hard decisions to make. If you want to just turn it over to EEA and OSEA to share their thoughts and the lack.
So when I looked at this, sorry, use that, don't pretend laugh.
But for the broadcast people.
Oh, okay.
For cable viewers, too.
So when I looked at this, this is not my area, right? And I looked at these different things on here, and for me, I needed more information as to what they were for. And me and my, Liz and my thought, I'll just pull up that information that I found a link to and I'll just read that, you know, flyer. And I looked at it and it's like 150 pages or just this one, right? So I looked that over and it still comes back into my mind. The things that I hear are people asking for is student-to-EA ratios, right? My friend Kathy was here, but she's a four o'clock in the morning person. She gets the food going for everybody. She was going to tell you some of the different situations that come up for our folks, and it's, a lot of it is because of, we're short-staffed. Some of it is because we need a better training. A lot of these things are also addressed in that Senate Bill 283, and hopefully that goes through, that will assist with this too. But I think I will, I'll tell you some of the stories that she told me. So one of the things that she had talked about, in talking about the student-to-EA ratio, a situation had come up where two EAs were out on a playground, and they were really worried because there was about 195 students, right, out there, and there was only two of them. And their worry was, what if something were to happen and that would pull one of those EAs away? And then the other EAs there with, you know, the 95 students. And it puts a lot of stress on our folks. So my big ask is to get more staffing and then also get the training. We were talking about training opportunities that could be possible. And I'm not sure how that all fits in with this, but these are just some wants or things that I think that we need. And the conversation that Judy had talked about with the suicide training that was available to the student had also brought up. I think this would be vital for classified to also have training. And there's assist training through LNSD that is fabulous, but our people would have to take time off work in order to get that training. And a lot of them feel guilty because if they take time off their jobs, they know that that extra burn will be on the rest of the staff. But it's a fabulous training. So, and then like de-escalation training is something else that I think would be really helpful for all of our classified. And that's the bus drivers too, you know, because they're in the bus of all these students. So let's see, what else? Also Kathy had told me about one of the special EAs that had been bitten. And this was a while, I think she said it was a week or two weeks ago. And this person still has infection in her arm from this bite. And if, I know there are, there's equipment that could assist that person so to protect them better, equipment like professional, what is it? Like the PBE, right? So, and then also training that they could, I don't know what that training is, but there's got to be something out there that can help with that. That if that situation comes up, that they have some kind of tools that they can use. So, and I think that's what being pushed, so.
And then from the license perspective, it's a little bit hard to look at the integrated funds budget and know what to recommend for that budget without having a side-by-side comparison to see what's in the general budget and what's being planned there, because there will be some overlap. Many of the things that are common wants and asks from all three of our employee groups hopefully are covered in the bigger budget, and we can't not talk about that in front of you. So, but we also know that the integrated funds themselves require a focus on providing supports for historically and currently underserved groups of students. Many of the proposed activities in the integrated funds are doing that and will do that if we continue to fund them. I think from a license perspective, one that is missing is literacy for older students. So in the past, like the last time you made a plan for the SIA money, there was a big focus on K3 literacy, which is great and needs to happen. But we also need to remember that we have students right now, many, many students in our middle schools and in our high schools who are not yet reading proficiently. And we have to systemically address that. And licensed staff feel like we don't have a systemic way of addressing that yet as far as programs or classes available for students. It's just kind of this piecemeal situation. And so that, that is something that we would like to see added. Other priorities that EEA members are centered around are really our two biggest worries for our students right now. And those are their social, emotional well-being and the intense academic supports that are needed to help kids, you know, after just a few really rough years. And so again, that kind of goes into other budgets, and I can't pretend to speak to what from this budget or the general budget is going to address that, but really the most impactful ways to address those two big worries are class size, special and caseloads, having enough staff, including our very important classified staff in our buildings, working with students every single day. And those requests probably sound like a broken record, but the impact that they would have can't be diminished or discounted. Our students need to be known, they need to feel connected, they need to be safe and have their individual needs met. And 4J has created a lot of impactful supplementary programs to support our students, but it's not enough if our students don't also get the attention and connection that they deserve in our schools every day. And the way to do that is to budget for staff who are well-trained, mentored, and not stretched too thin in our schools. So EEA encourages you to consider every line item in every budget without mind.
Just a little bit more for MAPS and I hear every day in my MAPS role from building administrators who are struggling with staffing to address mental health and SEL needs. Staffing is a real common element all three of us can align on quite easily because it is real need. Pandemic left us, as they've said, with greater intensity and greater frequency of these needs, and staff aren't doing their best to address them, often in very understaffed situations right now. I don't want to go too far, we've heard that a lot, it's hard not to be a broken record on it, I agree on that. But I think we're a broken record because the needs come up every single day. Appreciate this opportunity to talk with you and we're happy to answer any other questions you have too. Thank you for this opportunity for us to give input, and it's really important to us to stand united and appreciate the opportunity.
And any questions for Sabrina and Shu?
So let me get this straight, you need more staff? Sorry, humor at this time isn't worth it, is it?
I want to thank you for standing so late. I appreciate that, hearing from you all is really important to this process, and your voice is crucial, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Who's pointing on the board budgets?
For record-keeping purposes, I believe Laurel O'Rourke is no longer present in our meeting, so may that be in the minutes. Last item on our amended agenda, revised agenda, is to approve, an item for action to approve the Legislative Board Subcommittee Letter in support of HB 2883, which I'm guessing is 2883. It's a second read, so we're all familiar with this. So do you have, I'm going to turn it to you to see if you have a motion?
I move that we approve the letter in support of HB 2883 so we can submit it to the appropriate committee.
Is there a second, Gordon Laper? So the motion is to approve the letter written by the Legislative Board Subcommittee in support of HB 2883, made by Judy Newman and seconded by Gordon Laper. Is there any discussion? Right, we can take that to a vote then. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes unanimously with five ayes from Maya Rivasa, Gordon Laper, Judy Newman, Michelle Shu, and Alicia Hayes. So considering we amended our motion to finish with those two items, I want to thank everyone and remind you that our next regular board meeting is scheduled for March 15th, 2023. This meeting is adjourned at 10:07 PM.